Six oh one, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Gonzalez, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establish when accord.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Cisera Nevares.
Here.
Ralph Turan.
Here.
Mayor Eli Hertier.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo is absent. Mayor, we have a court.
Item number four, public comment.
We have several speakers, starting with Humberto Nevares. Mr. Nevares, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Humberto Nevares. I live in District Number One, South of Highway Ten. And we have a neighborhood in the Cielos, Mar, Cielo, Grease, the Cielos. It's been there for, right now, over a year. And it's been a real nice neighborhood. Except that we have a lot there that they say is supposed to be a park. It's a pond. And the only thing we have is sand, and very, very thin sand, like flour. And every time we have some air in the neighborhood, all the frontal lounge on the outside of the park, around the park, they cover with sand, like sand dunes. Really, really bad. And weeds. So, I understand that the city is gonna build a rock wall around the pond. It's in the plan. And then I would like to, please, I would like to ask if we can have some grass on the north side for the new pond. At least some grass right now, so we can stop the sand. In the future, maybe a park or something, because we need a park for our kids in the neighborhood. Keep them on the streets. But at least, right now, grass will do. In the future, then, we probably have some entertainment for the kids over there. A football soccer park or something. But right now, we need, it's urgent to recover the sand. And I think that's the first thing we need right now. We have some people from the neighborhood. We're here, so we are coming right in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Eva Rojas. Ms. Rojas, you have three minutes.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Eva Rojas. And I am here for the proposed rezoning of the, rezoning of the tracks, eleven B one, eleven B two, eleven B three, Robert E. Nix. And that's at one sixty-one forty-three Gateway West, one sixty-one thirty-three Gateway West, and one sixty-one oh six Gateway West. And this is just for transportation company planning. Thank you.
Miriam Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. I wanted to mention something that you're about to see on your screen soon. It's about Rio Vista. I had brought this up at the time when you guys had voted on approving the onion field. And I mentioned that the specs showed that the rock wall was gonna be really close to Rio Vista, not necessarily allowing for whitening of that road. It's a very tight road, right there where it meets Thunder. As you can see, it's about the size for a sidewalk. In my eyes, that doesn't look like that leaves enough space for whitening of the road. Also, I had mentioned during that meeting, many meetings back, about how high that rock wall was going to be, because it is gonna be a very, very, very large pond. I mentioned something about it probably should be a six-foot wall because the possibility of teenagers or kids getting into it. If you look down the picture, it's about a four-to-a-five-foot wall. When I approached it, you know, it was shorter than I was. So, yes, I am wearing a little bit of a heel today, but that wasn't the point. It's, you know, if I can see over it, it's very easily climbable, very easily approachable by many kids. So, I wanted to bring that to the attention of City Council and City Staff. So, hopefully, we can look into that. Other than that, there has continued to be speeding on Stockyard. Just today, at around five o'clock, I saw an eighteen-wheeler, without anything carrying behind it, going about, I don't know, forty-five, six, fifty, down Stockyard. So, still an issue. Also, I'd like to mention that I do have a lot of neighbors that are gonna be speaking today from the Cielos, and that I hope that we pay extra attention to them, since they have all come out. I would appreciate that from City Council as well. Thank you.
Maria Escudero. Mrs. Escudero, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon for you all. And the reason we're here, we are a group of neighbors in the subdivision, Cielo del Río, Number Two. And the reason we're here is because we want to petition the building of the park. That park was promised to us when we bought the houses. And we consider that it is important for our kids to have a place where they can play, for the adults where they can gather to know each other, and to make a community, a strong community. And we were waiting for almost two years to that park to be completed, and we haven't seen anything for the park. And that's the reason we are here. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia Treviso. Ms. Treviso, you have three minutes.
Hola, que tal? Buenas tardes a todos. Este, mi petición, como mi vecina acaba de decir, nosotros tenemos alrededor de un año viviendo en esta comunidad de los Cielos. Fuimos hasta cierto punto incitados a comprar este, esta casa, puesto que se nos hizo muy atractivo a todos nosotros como vecindario tener un parque dentro de nuestra comunidad. Al momento de que se hace todo el cierre de nuestra comunidad, que ya todos los habitantes estamos en nuestras casas, pues no vemos ningún tipo de construcción en ese parque, que para mí personalmente es importante, puesto que yo tengo hijos chicos. En cuestión a las compras que se hicieron por parte de la constructora, y sobre todo las promesas que nos hicieron, yo lo veo como que si nos timaron, porque fue como un gancho para nosotros poder comprar esa propiedad. Y hasta ahorita le digo, ya tenemos dos años, algunas personas, la mayoría tenemos un año, y sin embargo, no se ve movimiento de absolutamente nada. Entonces, yo quiero personalmente pedirles que si pueden poner un poquito de atención a esa comunidad para que sea en bien de todos nosotros, y sobre todo de los niños que, hay muchísimos niños en esa comunidad. Gracias.
Javier Villazona. Mayor, for the record, Mrs. Colombia Lobo's arrived at six eleven. Señor Villazona tiene tres minutos.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Javier Villazona. Este, también estoy aquí representando este parte de los vecinos de la parte de los Cielos, aquí arribita. Y como comentan mis compañeras, aquí tenemos, pues muchos, ya más de un año, esta propiedad que es un terreno baldío, se supone que está aprobado por el municipio como un parque, y pues eso acá ha traído muchos problemas para nuestras casas, porque pues prácticamente el landscape ya no existe, este, es mucha tierra, y pues es un problema para toda la comunidad alrededor. Y pues quisiéramos lograr un parque para nuestros niños, para toda la familia, toda la comunidad en general, y espero y nos escucha. Muchas gracias.
Luisa Paricio. Ms. Paricio, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Well, same thing, the park. Most importantly, that it was promised to us, the builder. We don't know what the process is on building the park, but it was promised to us when we bought the houses. Right now, all the houses around the pond, it's only there. There's no landscape no more. And, I mean, just, we're just here to see what we can do to create a park there. Thank you.
Rocío Rosales. Ms. Rosales, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So, basically, yeah, there's like fifteen other people that are gonna come up here and talk to you about this park that was promised to us. We really have no knowledge as to what happened or why that park is not there. We just feel that if we were told something, you know, it should be fulfilled. I don't know, and I guess there has to be a place where we can investigate to see if our homes are being taxed, thinking that there's a park there. I don't know if the city had approved it. I don't know if it was a miscommunication or what it was. At this point, it's really become a problem. I mean, the dirt, it's, I feel we should have brought pictures, because it's incredible how damaged that landscaping is. And, I mean, that's money that we've put into our homes, and I've seen my neighbors clean those rocks time and time again, just to get completely covered in sand again. It's dangerous, you know, that lot. There's a lot of broken glass, there's a lot of weeds. And, I mean, personally, one of my nephews was injured while playing there, because there was broken glass. And, I mean, these kids literally have nowhere to go nearby, my nephew's ten. They also throw a lot of trash there. I know that there was like this mattress that had been there for like months and months. And it just looks ugly, you know, it's embarrassing to me as a homeowner to have people over and see that empty lot there. So, I mean, again, like I said, we're just here to petition what was told. You know, I don't know what the process is after this. We were told this was the first process to bring it to the city's attention. And we do plan to move forward with whatever we have to do in order to get somewhere, you know, maybe a middle ground or some agreement as to what we would want. Thank you.
Letizia Ariza. Ms. Ariza, you have three minutes.
Okay. So, Letizia Ariza, también vivo en los Cielos, también con todos los vecinos. Los permitieron algo que no era, que iban a poner un parque. Y pues es un peligro para los niños, es como unhealthy también para los niños. Y también no invitamos a gente, porque está horrible. Vea, también está muy feo, como el otro lado de freeway, está muy bonito. Y pagamos taxes, muchos taxes, y no es justo que este lado está ahí un feo. Y este, también lo mismo, que no sé por qué, Classic American me dijo que iban a poner un parque, y ellos dicen que no, pero ahora es de socorro. Donde mandamos, Dios sí demanda, por favor que pongan algo allí, porque está horrible. Y hay mucha tierra, lo están usando de basurero. Antillas, colchones, piedras quebradas, y todo. Gracias.
Mayor, that was our last speaker. Item number six, no, item number five, presentation from the Medical Center of the Americas Innovation Center regarding their programs and resources for upcoming entrepreneurs and their new Innovator Boot Camp program.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak. My name is Nancy Lowry. I'm with the Medical Center of the Americas Foundation. The Medical Center of the Americas Foundation purpose is to catalyze the life science industry here in our region. And we do that in two ways, by working on promoting people and places. I'm standing too close. And places, we are responsible for the master planning of the four-hundred-and-forty-acre Medical Center Campus. That's a picture of what it should look like, hopefully, in twenty to fifty years. And this campus is located between downtown and Bassett Center, and that glass building on I-ten, that everybody goes by and goes, what's in that building? That is the center of the Medical Center of the Americas Campus. U M C, University Medical Center Hospital is there, as is Texas Tech Medical School, the new fire department that was built on the highway. That's all within the four-hundred-and-forty-acre campus of the Medical Center of the Americas. And so, we are attempting to master plan that area and to build it up in order to make it a second downtown focused on health, life sciences, and innovation in those areas. The newest facility going in there is the VA Central Wellness Central Clinic. The VA is dispersing some of its resources in building three remote clinics in El Paso, in the county. The first one to be built is the Wellness Clinic. It's a mental health clinic. It, ground was broken in October of last year, and it will open it, or we will turn it over to the VA in November of this year. And it should open in January and house the facilities for treating mental health issues for veterans. So, it'll all be located there on our campus. The building that is, oh, and that's the plat behind the Cardwell Collaborative. The open space to the left will house the Veterans Center, and the area to the right will be an urban park. In our neighborhood on the campus, there are not very many parks, and so part of our commitment to the neighborhood is to build an urban park there. It'll have a pond, walking trails, exercise equipment, picnic tables for use of the whole neighborhood and the campus. That's what the VA clinic will look like when it opens in January of 2020. The other building that I want to talk about on the campus is the Cardwell Collaborative. That's the glass building on the highway. It is a state-of-the-art research, medical research and tech incubation facility. At that space, we have incubated already thirty startups since we opened the building in 2016, and it's the home of our programs. So, it's more than a building, though. It really is a place that we are working to promote innovation in our region. And so, it houses all of our programs. We have a multitude of programs. The only one I'm gonna talk about is the Innovation Center. The Innovation Center's goal is to catalyze, grow startups in our region. And I'm talking about tech-based startups. Sixty percent of our startups are medically or health science-focused, but a numbers of them aren't. We have a startup there, Insight Four D, which is a gentleman and his partner who work for a construction company. And they have created a platform, a software platform, to manage onsite construction. We have, O-Ten Medical is a nurse. He runs a series of dialysis clinics, and he has created a medical device that monitors the health of people, of diabetic feet. And there are numbers, so our startups come from universities, they come from garage inventors. We welcome all startups, as long as they're tech-based. So, we're looking for people who have ideas, tech-based ideas, that wanna start a company, or people who have a company, who are willing to work to grow that company. And we do that by providing a series of programs. They're centered around training, but it also includes one-on-one office hours with our staff, access to mentors, expert panels, speakers, access to the facility. So, if you need lab space, we have thirty thousand square feet of wet and dry lab space that as a member of our program, the Innovation Center program, you can utilize for free. And as your startup grows, we have the opportunity to present to investors for potential investment. And so, our training sessions are centered around a series of boot camps that are three-to-six-week boot camps that focus on the aspects of growing, building and growing a business. So, we start with what we call the ideation phase, which is when you have an idea, doing your market research or customer discovery, looking at your business, developing your business model. And then we work towards the actual formation of your company. How do you, and then how do you get investment? How do you launch, how do you get your first sales? Where's your revenue coming from, employment, all of that. Our boot camps start, we run a September to June program, and our boot camps start next week on Tuesday with market research. And then they run through June, with the last one being pitching to potential investors. I know September tenth isn't long from now. So, I've been talking with Victor Retta and some people at Socorro. And with your permission, we're offering to run the market research boot camp here in Socorro. These are small, intensive sessions. We take five to eight companies or ideas at a time and run them. Market research runs four weeks. And we are looking at starting on October second and running for four weeks on Wednesdays for an hour and a half. And should we get five ideas in the county that want to participate, we will run a boot camp here in Socorro. Because I know it's difficult to get downtown. Our boot camps right now are running at lunch from eleven-thirty to one, and I know that's very difficult for people. But, so, we will either schedule this based on morning or evening sessions, whatever's more convenient for the community. And we'll have a table at your Harvest Festival next week to promote it more. And if, as I said, if we get five people who wanna work through a tech idea, we'll come out here and work through it with them. And, oh, there's the URL to apply, and all of our programs are free. We are graciously funded by the City of El Paso and by the U.S. Department of Commerce, so we don't charge for our programs. Once you apply and get accepted into the program, we kind of stick with you for life. And I have more packets if anyone's interested and if you have any questions.
Mr. Veron.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to move up item number thirty-five, thirty-two, twenty-seven, in that order.
Thirty-five, thirty-two, and twenty-seven.
Just five.
Just three?
Just three.
Just three. Thirty-five, twenty-seven.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Cisera Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Turan.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo.
Yes.
Item number thirty-five, discussion and action on the regional transit next steps by Planning and Development County of El Paso Public Works Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Sal Alonso from El Paso County, Transportation Engineer. With me today is Mr. Daniel Marcus, who is also a Transportation Engineer with the county. Thank you for having us this evening. This presentation is a follow-up from our last presentation that we had from Mr. Jose Landeros, Planning and Development Director. This is an update of what has occurred since the last presentation and give you a little update on what the other agencies have commented as of today. So, if you recall, last time Mr. Landeros had presented this, he came in before the council and asked what scenario the City of Socorro would like to move forward with and also obligate the funding for the upcoming fiscal year. If you recall, there were about five, six scenarios to choose from. The City of Socorro chose scenario number three. And that was just to be allowed to eventually, as the upcoming years, be able to move up to scenario four, five, and six. So, just, this is just a quick recap of what scenario three was, which is the flex route local service, but also with the dollar ride. Gives you the annual cost and the performance measures. The rural transit access would be a hundred percent, and then the urban population access to transit would be at seventy-one percent. The other scenario that was also, scenario six was another scenario that was presented. I could tell you the town of Horizon was the only one who preferred this scenario. And the reason behind that was because this area, this service provided a little bit more coverage for the Horizon area. The City of Sanali, Town of Benton, and Socorro also chose scenario three, I'm sorry. Only chose scenario three. Town of Horizon was the only one who chose scenario six. Of course, the difference is, scenario six is more of a Cadillac version of the service. You could tell the annual cost goes up to eight million. However, the big difference is the urban population with transit access goes up to a hundred percent. And that would be because we would have not only the flexible routes, but also dollar ride, but also added two additional routes within this scenario.
Mr. Perez.
Oh, yes.
Sir, I don't mean to interrupt, but for my own benefit, what is the definition between the rural population transit access and urban population transit access?
The rural population with that transit access is what they're considered, the area that's considered in the rural areas defined. And then the urban is the outskirts area, like out in the Clint, out in the Fabinz area, that's considered in the urbanized, in the urban areas.
So, we would be considered rural?
Yes. I think a portion of Socorro is considered rural, and some of it is urban. I don't, I don't think this area, I don't believe I have a map that shows the areas defined as urban or rural at this point, but I'll be happy to share that with you and give you the breakdown on what areas covered.
Because my concern is, depending on the definition, you do get seventy-one percent access or one hundred percent access. And so, I just was curious about that definition. Thank you.
You're welcome. As a recap for the three scenarios, and we placed scenario five because that was another option, but just to give you a comparison between scenario three, five, and six. The difference between five and six was, and we don't have that illustration, but in scenario six, in the areas within Socorro and Horizon, there was what we called the donuts, and there were some areas that were, would be left out, that would not provide service. So, when we had our consultant rerun the models to close that gap, it created scenario six. And how we ended up doing that was providing an additional route within this scenario to give us the coverage that was. And how we ended up doing that was providing an additional route within this scenario to give us the coverage that was lacking in scenario five. So this is just kind of like a breakdown of scenario three, five, and six. And then it give you the breakdown of what the obligation per agency would be if you were going with the scenario three, five, and six. The cost breakdown was determined by the revenue miles. So based on the amount of revenue miles that our transit bus uh, is within this, they're within, within agency, that's how the, the, uh, the cost was determined. So it wasn't based on the ridership or anything, it was more on the revenue miles. Um, before I jump into this next slide, I do want to mention, um, we did have an outreach to all the agencies that were part of the original discussion. Anthony, Clint, Horizon City, Sanali, Socorro, Benton, the county, and we're still pending the State of El Paso. But from the original meeting that we had with all the agencies, only Anthony and Clint did not provide any recommendation or a favored scenario, whether it's scenario three, scenario one, or six. Um, they just couldn't commit anything and, or any funding towards the program just because, for example, if they would have chose scenarios three, and, and I actually presented this to the, their city council, uh, the seventy-six thousand was pretty much the entire budget for the entire city. So they just didn't have the funding to obligate or to commit at that time. So um, their feedback was, we like the service how it is right now, just if the county could provide bus shelters and we, we just wouldn't want to support any scenario. Same thing happened with the, the town of, uh, city of Clint, uh, same scenario was the budget. They just didn't have it in their budget to be able to obligate any funds at this time. So I did want to mention that because this outreach to date kind of gives you uh, what the comments were per all the agencies. Um, and as you could see, scenario, uh, the town of Anthony and Clint, again, they just didn't get any feedback as, as far as any commitment on any scenarios or any funding.
Mr. Pérez?
So then does that mean that the share, the share for each municipality or each participant is impacted at all?
Well, that, that's, that's why I wanted to comment that on our previous meetings that we had and what feedback we got. So because we did, we didn't get no commitment or anything from Anthony or Clint, we had to kind of look at the big picture. What is, does, does that do to all the agencies, how it gets affected? So we do have our consultant, which is TTI, rerunning the models to be able to give a new breakdown to see what it does. I, I couldn't tell you what it does as far as the annual obligation, if it increases by a thousand dollars or a little bit more than that. But once we get the, the final breakdown and the cost, uh, we'll be able to come back to, to the, uh, to the city council and provide that information. But these numbers are based on that the, the city of Clinton and, and Anthony are all participating. But I wanted to make that clear that uh, since then, after we met, uh, they just couldn't commit to any of these scenarios. So these numbers might change somewhat.
Ms. Elos?
So if, if they don't come back with an answer and, and they cannot commit because of funding, does this mean that their routes get, their area gets cut out?
That is a scenario that, that, and that's the reason why we're rerunning the models. Because if they do decide, you know what, we were able to obligate it or somehow find additional funding, or even if we go and, and secure additional funding, uh, say through the MPO, through a CMAC or some other source of revenues that we could bring them in, uh, then we have the numbers. But we also had to look at the worst case that they just don't want to participate, they don't want to do anything. Then we had to consider that the route services wouldn't go all the way out to Anthony, that we just stop at Benton, and then we wouldn't uh, provide service in Clint. That is something that is, you know, kind of defeating what we wanted to do because we were trying to do a county-wide service and not provide a county-wide service except for you and you type of deal. So we're, we're trying to look at all options, so, but one of the options is if they do not want to participate and they don't want to buy, uh, be able to support any of these scenarios, that one of the scenarios was that if we do provide, uh, stop the service, what that does, what does that do to all these scenarios and each uh, agency on, on what they're contributing, so.
And my, and I'm sorry, my other question was if, if we were, if they were to be cut out, then um, is there any obligation from the county to assist?
That is another thing that we also had discussed through Commissioners Court. Uh, one of the items was could the county perhaps um, assist these agencies in, uh, I don't recall what the, what we called it. It was like a buy-in program. So we would ask both Anthony and Clint if they would be willing to go say fifty-fifty the first year, and then maybe the second goes seventy-thirty, next year eighty-twenty, and then the fourth year have them completely obligate the fund.
And how likely is that?
Well, that, that's, we're still looking at that scenario too. Uh, but we're, until we get the new figures, rerunning the numbers, I, I, I wouldn't be able to say or commit whether the county will be able to absorb that difference a hundred percent. And that's why we wanted to be able to provide that cost breakdown to see if other agencies would, would really, would be willing to participate in absorbing some of that cost to keep them in the service.
So at, at this time, discussion in action, are we making a, a decision today based on the information you're giving us? Or you're just going to update us and move on?
This is an update, and also at the end, I would ask if, I know the reason why we started these conversations earlier in this year. I, I believe we met with you guys, uh, I guess it was eighteen, about a year ago, uh, to see if you would be able to obligate some funding for this fiscal year, uh, which is the twenty. And that was just to start collecting the, the, uh, the, yeah, the, what would be the annual obligations. So we start up the LGC, we start collecting the pot. I could tell you right now that Sanali and the town of Benton did obligate some funds for this upcoming fiscal year, as well as the county. Uh, the only one that has not committed or did not commit anything was the town of Horizon City because they just, uh, didn't.
Uh, but I want to add, and he's done with his presentation, staff does have a recommendation for council moving forward before you all make a decision.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. So um, I guess the next steps would be the, the funding agreements, and I, I believe Mr. Landeros had kind of given you a little rundown on what? Once everybody is committed, all, all the agencies that are due, they are going to participate, how this LGC was going to be created. So as you can see, it would be made up of the county Horizon, Socorro, Benton, and Sanali. They would contribute everything into what we'd be calling the County Transit LGC, and that's the Local Government Corporation. So in sense, we, the, we would be creating a private business to handle the, the funding. So all this funding would go into this LGC. The LGC will then contract with Sun Metro and its vendor and provide the service to the, all the communities.
Mr. Pérez?
So then with the LGC, there would be a board, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get to the next slide and I'll show you the, the structure, which I'm sure you're going to have comments on, because I've had comments on that, the way it was structured. But again, this is, this is our first draft, so feel free to comment as we, we move along. Because I, I know, like, I, I will be honest with you, the way this LGC organization was created was based on, I know all the agencies wanted to make sure they had a voice, they had members in there. But we didn't want to create this huge, massive, hate to say, MPO style of, of, of a board. So we wanted to condense it, but we wanted to make sure that all the agencies had uh, at least one vote in there that everybody was participating. The way this was organized or was created was having the town of Horizon have two, Socorro have two, Sanali have one, Benton, the county also have one, Sun Metro, which is non-voting, would have one. That would be what we call the Transportation Advisory Committee. So any recommendations, everything would be dealt with within this committee. And then we would take that to what we call the Board of Directors, Directors for the final approval or, or, or denial. That board is made up of Commissioners Court. Now, of, of, on my presentation, this is my last presentation that, that I've gone back to, report back to Benton, Sanali, and uh, uh, Benton, Sanali, Horizon, Horizon, I'm Benton somebody. Benton, sorry. Um, the, like I said, they, two of them did have obligate the fund for the new fiscal year, but the main feedback was the structure of the board. They did not want the Commissioners Court to be the Board of Directors. So at this time, I would take any comments to take back because, as you know, uh, this is a majority, that we want to make sure we get all the input from everybody. So I, I do want to come in and just kind of look and provide this information and say, this is a board and that's it. It, you know, this is why we're still having to bring back the LGC for your attorneys to review. Our county attorneys is, is currently working on it. Um, and should, we, we should have like a draft format hopefully in about two, two to three weeks that we could share with all the agencies and the county, and their attorneys to provide feedback before we move on to the, to the next stage. But one of the comments that I did share with her already was the comment on what we've gotten so far on how it was organized and the objection to this.
Mr. Artan?
And the only comment that we have is this is what, this is a different model that was pitched, it was pitched to us differently back in November.
Uh huh.
Right, it was the LGC that was going to actually make the decision.
Right.
And right now, my understanding is, is to cut all the red tape, we want the Commissioner Courts to make the decision, and we would only become a advisory board.
Right.
Which is something that I, I don't think we're, any of the other municipalities feel comfortable with.
That is correct, yeah. And I, I'm, I-
Mr. Pérez?
I, I, excuse me, I wouldn't feel comfortable either because we're putting up the cash, the municipalities are, and yet it's going to be overruled by the county in, in, potentially.
Correct.
So I think that the governing body should be the, the Board of Towns that make up the, the, the transportation as always, at least in my-
No, no, and I, I'll be honest with you, that's what I, we've been hearing in the last presentations that we've had. Uh, it was the same concern, the same comment was, couldn't the Advisory Committee be the Board of Directors? And that's what something that we're kind of most likely starting to look at. So hopefully by the time we have the draft LGC, we'll have the restructuring of the board. That way we could send it for, for you guys to get, you know, kind of look at it to see if that, you know, kind of meets everybody's needs. But the, the, the whole thought behind this was never uh, that the Commissioner's Court would be the body. We just didn't want a huge body similar to the MPO. Because it is, the MPO, if you know, it's, it's made up of thirty-four board members and it's, sometimes it's hard to move things along. So we wanted to condense it, but we want to make sure that we had everybody that's participating have a voice and a vote. Uh, but by doing that, that's why we decided to do Advisory Committee. But the deciding factor, per this model, it is a Commissioners Court. But with your same concerns that you stressed uh, to me today, I will make sure and kind of relay that and get, just kind of uh, go back to the court and tell them that, you know, all the agencies are supportive of this transit. However, the board is something that they just don't feel comfortable in moving forward with, as it's structured.
Mr. Doran?
Uh, the thing that concerns me is that the, the lion's share is going to be paid by Socorro. And then Sanali and Clint, if we're providing all this service to our area, uh, I'm sure there's going to be some overflow from them. And we're going to be subsidizing their, their towns' use of, of, of the bus service. So I mean, I think it should be all, everybody should, there, there should be a way to get them, everybody, all or none. Because we're going to be subsidizing other people.
I see.
And I don't think that the citizens of Socorro should be footing the bill for Clint and Sanali.
Uh, I'm sorry, Clint and Anthony, sorry. Sanali is, is, is part of the, one of the agencies that, that are participating and have obligated it. Sorry, I just want to make clarification, it's Anthony and Clint.
You're right, Clint, but I mean, I, I don't see the buses just stopping right at the city limits.
Right.
They're going to be subsidized.
And the way Clint is, it's between, right, Socorro and Fabinz. So Clint is right in between, so it's, it's one of those, we would be driving down, but we would kind of be like, sorry, we can't stop. And that, that's a little hard to do, especially that the purpose of transit is to provide service to everybody and not just certain areas. So that, that's, the whole goal behind this was to provide county-wide service to include everybody. So, but that, that's something that we're, we're still looking into.
Ms. Elos?
Remind me again why every scenario that I'm looking at here, our cost is either triple or higher?
Uh, again, the, the, the funding or the obligation uh, from each agency is based on revenue miles. So the mile, the miles that our, our transit provides within the City of Socorro, that's how it's generated. So if we were just passing by within a mile of your town, you would only be charged a mile of service. But I, I don't have that map in front of me, but uh, within the, the town of, the City of Socorro, that, you, you do have a lot of revenue miles within the city. That's why your percentage is a lot higher. Um, as, for example, you would think that uh, we, Benton for scenario three, for example, is, is only twenty-four thousand compared to Anthony. Anthony is a lot smaller and their rev, their annual would be seventy-six. And that's because our service covers a lot of miles within the Anthony area. That's why some of these are higher than others. As you can see, the county, because this county is kind of all over the place, that's why we have the highest uh, uh, funding obligation.
Ms. Elos?
So what I'd like to see is the percentage per mile that we're getting charged versus anyone else.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and possibly negotiate a discount because I know that um, there's um, miles in between that we, you probably, that we have more rural areas, can I say that? Um, but there should be a discount in there. We shouldn't be charged, you know, the exact amount because of that. I think um, if you look at, if you look at this, it's way too high, you know, even though we have miles in between. That's my opinion.
Mr. Doran?
I'd also like to see um, what the amount of people that use the service now.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I'd like to see also how many people use the service now.
Oh, okay.
I mean, because let's say Sanali has more people using the service than we do, but we're paying the lion's share. Because like she says, there are a lot of miles, uh, I'm on Alameda and I see that bus going by and it doesn't stop.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I mean, we're being charged for miles that there's nobody stopping for. But yet if they go to Sanali, it's smaller, so there's going to be a lot more people using it than use it in Socorro. So I think in addition to the ma, pardon me, the miles, we should also have ridership also. I'd like to see those numbers.
Sure. That one, we do have the ridership, but I'll be honest with you, I, I would have to see if we have ridership per agency. Because when we're, we're picking passengers, we're not, I don't believe we have it structured right now for our bus drivers to be, okay, I'm picking one in Anthony, one. Where now we're in the county, one, we're with Socorro, two. But let me see what we could do, I'm sure we could kind of give you a really good ballpark on the area. Because our bus drivers know the, the, what we're calling the hotspots on where we pick up the most passengers. So we'd be able to get you a, a number, but however, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to get you a number.
And, and the recommendation was what you just mentioned right now?
No, I didn't extend it.
No, I'm still, yeah, I got a couple more slides. That's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. So, so basically this organization relationship is pretty much what we just discussed. Is, you know, the, the county would uh, create the LGC, and then the LGC would be formed. Everybody buys into the LGC or pays in the, the annual obligation. And then from there, we would uh, contract with the City of Paso or Sun Metro to provide the, the day-to-day service. So on the outside, um, I'm sure José has said this, from, as, as a passenger, you're just going to see one seamless bus. You're not going to see uh, a, a county labeled vehicle versus a Sun Metro. It's just going to be, whether we decide to rename, rebrand Sun Metro, that's a possibility, uh, or whatever. But we want to make one uniform service. That way for the passengers using it, it's just a slim, uh, seamless uh, ride behind the scenes. That's when all, you have all these agreements in place between us and the cities and us and the LGC, LGC with Sun Metro. So the other thing we also wanted to do by making it uniform is to be able to make sure that we all have one uniform fee, which is right now is a dollar fifty. But be able to use transfers. Right now, uh, our transfers don't transfer onto Sun Metro and Sun Metro don't transfer into us. So what does that do? That, that kind of doubles somebody's fee, basically. If they're using our rural transit to transfer into a Sun Metro to go to downtown, that's one fifty each way, so it's six dollars round trip. Versus if we would accept transfers, we'll be able to- So it's six dollars round trip versus if we would accept transfers, we'll be able to cut that in half. We al, we'd also be providing monthly passes. Currently, our county transit does provide monthly passes like Sub Metro, but they both don't, and you can't use our monthly passes with them and it's just because of the financial. But wi, with this being one uniform, we'll be able to accomplish, uh, uh, things like that. And also provide, uh, students. I know we don't, I think Sub Metro does provide like senior citizen, uh, they, uh, military and I think student. The county doesn't have that currently right now. Um, but that's where we would like to go eventually. Even if this doesn't take off, the county is already looking at how to better themselves on, on providing better service. Uh, but we do have a plan B in place that's ongoing right now. But this is the ultimate goal is to be able to provide one seamless transit for the entire county. So the other thing we also wanted to, uh, mention was the two other ongoing planning documents that the county has going right now. And the first one is a route analysis. Currently, right now, the county has not done a run out analysis in probably over 15 years. And what that is, is it kind of analyzes our existing route service. So maybe 15 years ago, it made sense why certain routes stopped certain areas and why certain routes would only go into this area, not that area. But this, uh, scenario, I mean, this study will analyze and, and take account for all the new development. And the result of that, which we are anticipating getting at the end of this year, will provide possibly new routes, possibly new extensions to services right now. We're also looking at extending hours, uh, providing Sunday service, uh, as well. Right now, routes 10 through 40, only one from Sunday through Saturday. Route 50, the one that goes down Socorro Road, is the only one that provides Sunday service at a, as, with the, uh, modified time schedule. But, um, this route analysis will, will identify any, any other gaps that we didn't catch, capture within the feasibility study. So that, again, these are just examples of what else the county is doing to better the existing tran, transit service. But if this scenario three or s, or six does move on, the scenario planning, uh, the route analysis planning will ti, just tie in, uh, perfectly with this because we're kind of looking at it, uh, at the same time. The other study that we have going right now is the new bus shelter, uh, study. If you recall, uh, when we were having the public meetings for the feasibility study, uh, most comments that we got from the public was bus shelters. Currently, the county has zero shelters in any of their routes. So that is the, the courts, uh, one of the courts, uh, the commissioners court, um, priority is to provide bus shelters. So back in 2017, we did apply for what they call the rural, rural discretionary funds through Techstat. Um, we did ask for thirty, thirty, thirty bus shelters and we were wanting to place five per each route to at least have something. However, when we were, we had gotten our project selected, one of the, um, comments that we got from Techstat was, why only thirty? What if you needed sixty? What if you needed eighty? Why not ask for that? But at that point, at that point, we didn't have a planning document or, as you know, when you go after, uh, federal dollars or state money, if we, when you have a plan behind you justifying why you need X dollars or X amount of, of, of certain things, it's always good to have a plan, but we didn't have a plan at that place. So what Techstat ended up doing is giving us money to do a planning study to provide the location of the shelters, locate the hotspots, to be able to provide bus stops and also shelters with benches and, and, and some sidewalks to go along with that. So these two projects are kind of running concurrently because as you could see, they kind of run hand in hand because i, if we're expanding service and we're, we're, we're identifying certain areas that we feel that will have a lot of, uh, uh, need for, uh, for, uh, for pickup. Those are the locations that we're going to also identify to be a location for a bus shelter. Now, I do want to mention that, uh, since I have you here, uh, we'll be having a couple of public, uh, meetings here in the upcoming, I think, October 1st, 2nd and 3rd. And this is going to be a combined, uh, uh, public hearing, uh, format to provide comments for the county's county master's therapher plan. And we, within this county master therapher plan, we would be identifying, uh, of course, our roadway networks, how it ties into all the surrounding areas, Techstat, Horizon, Socorro. So our consultants have been reaching out to all the agencies, getting your information because we want to make sure that the other day, our roads line up, our sidewalks line up, our trails kind of connect from one side and our bike lanes connect to our budding, uh, neighbors. So that study, uh, that is ongoing right now, we will have a public hearing. Again, we have them in three different areas, October 1st, 2nd and 3rd. I believe the one in, within this area, which is just up East Lake, would be on October 2nd. Uh, we're trying to, uh, identify the final location, but as soon as we get the information, we'll pass it along. Um, but as long, uh, with this, uh, public hearing for the county master therapher plan, we're also going to have the opportunity for everybody to provide their comments. And I welcome all the public as well to provide where they would like to have these bus shelters. Because at the end of the day, um, it's the passengers that, that they know where, you know, where the main hotspots are. We, we have our analysis ongoing with CTI, but it's always good to get the public's input. Um, because again, uh, we, we like to get the day-to-day users because they tell us a little bit more than models or stuff like that. So, uh, welcome everybody to come attend these public meetings. And we'll make sure to give you a flyer as, you know, within the next, prior to the next week to provide, if you could distribute for us. So, uh, so going back to this, uh, these are the two, uh, other planning efforts that the county is doing. Both of them are scheduled to be completed at the end of this year. Uh, there is a new call that would be out at the end of this year for the rural discretionary that happens every two years. So this time, by the time the applications are due, we will have this planning document justifying the need for these bus shelters, whether it's eighty, ten, five, depending what the, the outcome is. But at this time, we will have these supporting document to be able to secure funding to provide bus shelters in different areas. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, uh, anybody may have or on our public hearing, so.
Ms. Ellos?
Um, as I'm sitting here, hearing your presentation and my wheels are turning in my head. Um, we do have new development, developments coming up. And so those are going to probably help us offset some of those, that cost. Um, but in, you know, in, in doing in your report, you know, taking into consideration, we have these projects coming up and, you know, getting with the city manager if you haven't already, when these projects are supposed to be completed or started, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm talking about the new developments here in Socorro, uh, residential developments. Um, but my question is if, um, and I'm still with the cost.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we were to get better hotspots, uh, uh, ideal hotspots, um, and the use of these hotspots by our residents, could that cost be um, reduced at our next contract? Do we have, it's a yearly contract, six month contract? I don't, I don't remember at this point.
No, so, um, in November, when, when, um, Mr. Medina was saying that it took over, it was a little bit different. I know that we had agreed on scenario number three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, right now, I just think that we're running a little bit behind. Number one, we've already passed our budget. We didn't budget for this, um, cost. Number two is they're still developing the rural routes. Um, I, I, I think the analysis has to be done. I do know that we, uh, me and Mike talked a little bit about their CMAC funding through the NPO that will help the study. Once the study is done, then I don't think that the city would have a problem participating and putting funds into it. I just don't think we're there yet, right? The board hasn't even been, uh, established. And that was something that was told to us that it would be and now the board is changing. It, it's not the way that it was pitched to us back then. So it's just a, a completely different, not completely different scenario. It's just something that I just don't think right now, uh, we budgeted for it and I don't think we're ready to keep that set. And I know that, um, Mike has other comments.
Right. So I, I think Mike, being a city planner for the city of Socorro, I think from the onset is that, uh, this is a very good project that the county has. Uh, transit accessibility is very limited. Obviously, only the city of Paso through the mechanism of Sub Metro is able to really advance that type of, of mobility for their citizens. So I think that when we first met with the county and the other municipal leadership, uh, that was invited to the table is that we made a recommendation that we approached the NPO. Uh, as the city manager mentioned, there are CMAC dollars and CMAC dollars are specifically awarded to areas that don't meet the air quality, uh, as it pertains to federal regulation. So the NPO does have CMAC number, uh, dollars. So by accessing this type of program, we reduce the total cost to the entire partnership, if you will. So like, uh, Sal was talking about is that if collectively or ideally everybody agreed with scenario three, we all have to come up with a portion. So if we're talking about 2.3 million dollars, our portion is obviously over close to 400,000 dollars. If we approach the NPO, we only have to come up with 20% of that match. So when we look at 2.3, so our share would actually be a little bit higher than what our upfront cost would be. The advantage of having the CMAC dollars is that it's a three-year program. So we would come up with our portion of the 20% if we divide whoever is participating. Then from there, we are able to carry the program for three years. From that time, we will be able to see how effective the system is as it relates to us and to others. Then from there, if there's ability to expand it, we could still apply for more CMAC dollars. So I think collectively, as we, uh, met with the county a couple of weeks ago, there were changes to how the LGC was presented. And I think the staff recommendation is that we don't advise that the current, uh, recommendation move forward on that. Uh, with regard to the studies, the studies are very important. We need the route analysis and we also need the bus shelter. Currently, we have 31 stops in the city. We have Route 84, which is serviced by Sub Metro and I believe Route 30, 40 and 50 by the county. So there is accessibility to transit, but I think that in its relationship to getting there, uh, the staff recommendation is still to approach the NPO for a possible pilot program.
Mr. Perez?
And I just wanted to, to voice that concern that I think the route analysis is important because then I think that'll impact the final numbers in terms of how many miles were, um, built or stops, whatever the, whatever the baseline is. And that way, everybody gets a fair share or should get a fair share of costs applied. So I think that, yeah, we should postpone this or hold on to postpone or what, what would be the recommendation, recommended motion?
Well, I, I think that in its relationship to making a recommendation that we ask the county to also look at the opportunity of approaching the NPO. One of the elements here that was raised at, at our last meeting is that transit is, you know, transit tends to be a form of regional significance. So what that means is that the NPO is required to model the transit routes. All these routes are in a sense, so even if we were able to run with the LGC right now, in my opinion, we're kind of behind the time of trying to get it into the NPO documents as it is right now. So it would have to, we would have to petition the NPO to remodel their, their current model to incorporate this transit. Uh, with the lead weight in the development of a new plan, we now have the opportunity, if we get CMAC, however we get it, to include it as part of their, uh, update. And I think their new plan is 2050.
So at this time, that's okay? I'll go ahead. Go ahead.
I just had a good question for, uh, Sal is that if we oblige funds right now, who would manage it? If the corporation doesn't exist?
I, well, for example, for the, the, the Sanelli and the town of Vinton, who did set aside funding on the side, at this point, uh, since the LGC is not created, so we wouldn't be colle, we would, it would be just money that you, you, each agency would be having in their budget. And then at the end of the budget, if the LGC is established, at that point, we could start. Uh, but, but we wouldn't just take money and just hold it in a bank. It, it would be not, it wouldn't be obligated at this time until the LGC is created.
So my recommendation would be to leave the item once they bring it to the, to the LGA and then if they've gone to the NPO, then at that point, we would bring it back to see if we would want to allocate any type of funding. That's the goal once the corporation exists.
Yes. And I did want to make, uh, in addition to, uh, Mr. Medina's comment about the NPO, we did, we, we have started those conversations and in fact, I believe the NPO right now is working on a, the CMP? The, uh, the new CMP, uh, that they want to create. So my understanding is the NPO is reaching out to all agencies and asking them, I guess it's a wish list, for the next five years. Uh, and I think Sanelli and I believe the county are the only ones that still haven't met with the NPO. We're scheduled to meet with them in the, uh, upcoming weeks, but I know the town of Horizon already submitted their project list and I believe Socorro also did the same. So one of those projects that the NPO is seeking is what is priority? And of course, this is one of our priorities, so we would be placing this as one of our wish lists, uh, in this scenario because that, like Mike was saying, when funding comes available, we're in the, in the model per se. And there could be 10 millions of dollars right now in CMAC. We, it would be hard for us to, um, get that money because we're not in the model or in the current model in the Distino 45. But because they're making some modi, uh, modifications and the creating this new CMP, our project would be, I guess, be in the queue per se. So as money comes available, our project is in there. So that is something that, you know, we did, uh, we are considering going after a CMAC dollars as a pilot project perhaps to reduce the overall cost for all the agencies. But this is kind of worst case scenario that there's no CMAC, there, we didn't get funding, there's nothing. This is what each agency would be looking at. So, uh, just wanted to make sure that, you know.
So at this time, I'd like to make a motion not, to not participate in L, in the, um, LGC, but to direct staff to approach the NPO, uh, and pursue appropriate funding. Uh, that may help us in developing this regional transit system. And also to, um, make a final determination pending the route analysis to see if it impacts the costs to the city of any.
Second.
Second.
Can we have a speaker for the second? Maryam Cruz?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. I have, I wanted to make sure that the new routes that are, uh, going to be in Socorro are going to be two-way routes. And of course, we'll be able to talk about that at the public hearings that you're going to have. Also, I had mentioned that there should be a connection between the route, I believe it's eighty, maybe it's not eighty-four. I think it's eighty-four that goes down Horizon, but then it shoots out into Clint. And so you waste an hour trying to come back to then get connected to sixty that takes you downtown. Um, anyway, so there can be a connection there. I think that would be helpful. Uh, the only other thing that I wanted to mention was ridership and the shelters. Um, I don't think that we should only focus on people who are using it right now. For example, personally, I would get on a bus if I could go straight downtown. Even if it took me 40 minutes, an hour, um, I would be using that bus. So I'm currently not using it, but I would be someone who'd be willing to get on a bus. And so even though, um, I think it's important to have ridership and, and lots of other information, I think we need to think about the future and need to think about future riders, um, that are going to be able to be able to use the system. That's it. Thanks.
Ms. Medina, is that, Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Ms. Zaran?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
And he's also the mayor.
Yes.
Iron number 32.
Thank you.
This, thank you. Discussion and action on the approval of the interlocal agreement between the city of Socorro and city of Paso Health and Environmental Services in the amount of $360,148 and to authorize the city manager or her designate to execute contract.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we did receive the interlocal agreement for the health and environmental services. However, it's not at the $360,000. It's actually $287,204. We questioned, um, why the significant increase and it was an error on their part. So in reality, the only increase we're looking at is a $32,000 increase from last year to this year at 287. So if, if we do approve, it has, it has to be part of the motion, the, the amount, which is 287,000?
Two hundred and four. And four?
Correct. And the increase, um, my understanding is because we have seen an increase in SICA, um, cases here in our area. So there's a lot more fogging and a lot more monitoring that they are conducting here in our area.
Repeat the amount, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you repeat the amount?
287,204 dollars.
So good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, uh, council members, city manager and staff. My name is Angela Mora. I'm deputy director. My name is Angela Mora. I'm deputy director with the city of El Paso Department of Public Health. And again, the interlocal agreement is on the agenda. For public health services, we had an increase of thirty five thousand dollars. We are here or amounts to ninety four cents per individual. We are here, myself and our fiscal manager, Ms. Marian Gallegos, to answer any questions if you want. You have any needed details. And Mr. Jimmy Smith, he's with the environmental services department. He's here to answer specific questions related to the vector control services. So I'm not much of a talker, so I think my presentation, I don't have a presentation, but it's going to be very cut and dry. So the increase, your amount for our services, public health services last year were two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty. This year is at two hundred and fifty, fifty three and ninety one dollars. The increase is approximately thirty five thousand, four hundred and thirty one. The main reason, again, that's ninety four cents per capita. The main reason is because of the the increase on the cost of our programs. At the department, the increase was by about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's why your amount amounted to thirty five thousand dollars for it, for a hundred and thirty one. That's one of the main reasons for the increase. If you want a lot of details, Ms. Gallegos will answer that. We also, you have a population increase of four hundred and forty, eighty five individuals. So that also contributed to the increase. And we also are are providing an additional service in twenty twenty, which is family planning services. We were very fortunate to be able to establish, we're in the process of establishing family planning clinic, which is going to open on October first, so that was also factoring the increase. So that's the very easy cut and dry for public health. We can answer any questions related to this increase. And if you don't have any questions, Mr. Jimmy Smith, he can talk about vector control. Are there any questions for public health?
Ms. Ellos?
I do, just for for educational purposes and for our people that are constituents that are here. Talk a little bit about the programs that you have, what you provide and where is this planning, what is it?
Family planning? Family plan.
Family planning, where is it going to be opened at?
The, to start with, the clinic is going, is opening on the first of October. And the main office is, we're changing the name to a name that is going to be including a lot of reproductive health services, STD and so on and so forth that you already have. But the main one now is family planning is going to be at the El Paso Drive office to start with. Later on, we have the idea of expanding services to other areas in the community. So that's the new program. We have the weak services, weak women's infants and children's services, which consist of nutrition, education and guidance and support in terms of nutritional goods for the for the individuals, the mothers and the children up to age five. That's one. We have HIV testing, diagnosis services. We have hepatitis C, STD screening, diagnosing and treatment. Case investigation comes with HIV and STD. All the cases that need to be reported to us by physicians, hospitals, any medical provider. We have the obligation to find out whether or not the individual infected of this is for all communicable diseases. If they had a, they have to disclose their partners. We do this in a very sensitive and anonymous way. And the disease interdental specialists, they they find the individuals, partners of the individual who is infected with the STD. And we ensure that they are brought into the office for diagnosis, testing and treatment. So that's another one. We have emergency preparedness, which encompasses conducting, having an all hazards plan, plans that involve everything from our viral emergencies, all vector mosquitoes, West Nile, SICA and what have you. We exercise plans for including radiation emergencies for bioterrorism terrorism incidents, for example. We exercise the plans. We have a very close collaboration with Socorro ISD. We use their facilities to exercise and we have constant communication with them in terms of preparing and exercising plans to respond. The SICA again is one of the plans that we have, our viral. We have epidemiology, which they conduct surveillance. All cases of reportable conditions are reported to by law to the health department because we're the health authority in the in this area, El Paso County. We in turn keep track of anything that is unusual in terms of the reporting. For example, the hospitals, if there's a normal number of flu cases are admitted to hospitals, for example. When we see any any increase, then we we have what we call threat assessment within the executive team to determine whether or not this might be increasing and if we're going to need to activate to respond to a flu pandemic, for example. And then we would set up points of dispensing where we would provide prophylactic treatment to the individuals that are at risk of, like, you probably remember H one and one. So it's similar to that. So we monitor not only flu, but we monitor any of the thirty plus reportable conditions that by law, medical providers need to report to us. We have also health education and prevention. We do all sorts of tobacco and other kinds of preventive presentations at schools and different settings throughout the community. I know we have several others that I'm kind of forgetting, Mariette. I don't know if you remember. So we have, I'm going by offices now within the department. We have laboratory services where we do the SICA testing. And we, right now, we're not equipped yet to do West Nile virus, but we're working on that. So we're doing SICA testing. That's the other service we provide. And we conduct the SICA testing at the local public health laboratory. Any confirmatory tests, we ship to the state for them to do another test and confirm. And we do, of course, the lab, that's the STD tuberculosis and other testing. Tuberculosis, as you know, we often have outbreaks in the community. That's another service that we provide also throughout the county. And it consists not only of responding, providing diagnosis and treatment, but we're also very actively involved with jails and media other facilities conducting prevention education to ensure that we don't have outbreaks if possible. We have, hmm, what else do we have, Marian? I know we have more. So we we charge for for per person, per capita, approximately, what is it? Six thirty nine was the current year. For twenty twenty, it's going to be seven dollars and thirty three cents. One thing, I I oversee the emergency preparedness program and at any point in the future, I love emergency preparedness. I would like to present to you what we do in emergency preparedness and talk to you about the different types of plans that we have. Because whenever we have a public health threat and we assess that it might grow into something else, then we activate certain individuals within the health department. We have, this our workforce is about two hundred and seventy and we select, we have about fifty individuals that are constantly trained to be able to respond to emergencies. They were activated during the Walmart incident, for example. Some of them were activated with the missiles outbreak. I don't know if you know, but the first case that we had confirmed was from Socorro. And we had four other cases that luckily they were not confirmed, but they were investigated. And it takes a lot of time and effort and expertise to be able to do investigations and ensure that that everybody is quarantined and that they are not endangering other individuals with communicable disease.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So, Mr., it's all yours. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, first of all, let me apologize. I know either last week or the week before, you all received the charges that the city of El Paso puts upon you for our vector control, well, they were way off. Okay, so I have given you all a sheet of the the new cost. And and in comparison to last year, it's actually three thousand dollars down or less. So the first, the first one you got was for a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Well, it it ended up turning out to be thirty four thousand. But with that thirty four thousand, it is three thousand dollars less than the prior year. So basically, I'm just here to say, sorry, sorry for the scare. But we 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 try to do the best we can as far as, you know, get those costs to you. We we understand, you know, that everybody's on a budget and stuff, so that's that's what I'm here for. And I'm here for any questions you guys might have. You know, there, we, vector control does a lot of stuff that you only get charged for fogging, but we do a lot of extra stuff like setting up traps. We do educational events in Socorro at the schools, that kind of stuff. We, all of our mosquitoes that we trap, we send to Austin, we get them tested. And I know that within the last two to three weeks, we've had one human case here of West Nile in Socorro. And we also had some potentially bad mosquitoes. So we've had pools also that we've caught. So I'm just letting you know that basically, these charges are for fogging and we do that when we have these kind of issues. But, you know, there's, there's really not a charge for all the extra stuff that we do to try to prevent getting to that point where we have to come out in fog.
Do we have a motion?
So at this time, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we pursue or that we direct staff and appropriate staff to enter into the interlocal agreement with the city of El Paso Health and Environmental Services for the amount of two hundred and eighty seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Second. With them, there's some changes that our attorneys are working out, very minute. But as soon as we figure those out, then we will sign off.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. First, I want to thank the city manager for catching that. Thanks for catching that. Your constituents are thankful. And and second, I just wanted to mention again with what the gentleman just mentioned about my concerns that I've talked about before about the ponding areas that we have and mosquitoes, you know, that's what, that's where they breed, in in water. And so thinking long term about what the city plans to do about ponding and mosquitoes whenever we do get lots of rainfall. Thanks.
Item number twenty seven, discussion and action to adopt resolution five eighty four where the city of Socorro pledges to support the EPC W one D one's grant application to the United States Bureau of Reclamation, Water and Energy Efficiency Grants Program for fiscal year twenty twenty for improvements to the Riverside Canal that will lead to water conservation, drought mitigation and will benefit the residents and agricultural businesses of the city of Socorro.
Motion to approve or discuss?
Second.
Any questions?
Good afternoon, Alejandra Valdez, grants coordinator. The El Paso County Water Improvement District has approached us to for, to secure a resolution of support for this project for improvements on the Riverside Canal. As you recall, this, earlier this year, we did adopt the Paso Norte Trail Master Plan. And so the Riverside Canal would feed into that that trail system. And we're hoping to to support the irrigation district. With us is Mr. Omar Martinez with the Irrigation District in case you have questions that are specific to the project scope.
At this time, can we entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss item number thirty nine?
Motion to move into executive session?
Yes. Seven twenty seven, executive session?